38 Jen. 62 slides.
Yeah, I am no longer a problem.
No, she's totally teaching and learning.
It's the TNL is the issue. The minor like all pictures.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
No, not like two days.
They do. Well, I guess this is an exciting one.
Yeah, it's one of our better presentations ever.
Are you ready? Are we ready to get started? I'd like to call the school board work session for independent school district six twenty four quarter. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Strike forty here. Classroom here, Arcan.
Here.
Follow away the actor, Daniel. Allison.
Here.
Here.
All right, our first item on the agenda today is discussion item B one capital projects levy renewal. Mr. Ball.
Thank you, Chair Can, members of the board. We are preparing for possibility of renewing our capital projects levy. And we want to give the board an overview of that today and a suggestion of how we might move forward with our capital projects levy. I thought we'd start by, thank you, by talking about voter approved levies versus non voter approved or board authorized levies. When you get your property tax statement in November and you look at the school district portion, you see the voter approved and the non voter approved levies. And occasionally we get questions on exactly what's a voter approved versus non voter approved. And so the state statute allows for the school board to authorize some portions of our operator of our levy and others required for voter approval. So we're just talking about which is which of those. So the capital projects levy, these are voter approved levies. Capital projects levy was last renewed in November of 2013 for taxes payable 2014 through 2023. So that that was the original capital projects levy. And for the purpose of the acquisition of technology, musical instruments, textbooks and other curricular needs. So the current levy, that levy is still in place at 2.208 times the tax capacity to the school district. So that's one of our voter approved. Second is the operating levy. That was passed by the voters in 2017 and is in place through 2027. And that provides funds for operational expenses. $1,326 per student. Salaries, classroom supplies, utilities, transportation, any operating expense can be paid for over the operating levy. It's a general fund revenue. Third, the building our future bond referendum passed in 2019. That shows up as a voter approved in our property taxes as well. And so building our future was passed in November of 2019. That was $326 million bond referendum for the improvement and construction of our schools. Board authorized levies, yeah, there's a number of them. One is the long term facilities maintenance levy. There's two ways you can do long term facilities maintenance. One is through pay as you go, which is an annual money raised for that year and used. It's for the general maintenance is typically what we use pay as you go for. And then long terms facilities levy, our maintenance bonds are board will authorize sale of those bonds when it's a catch up. Like we have a bunch of roofs that need to get done or mechanical systems that need to get done. We'll pay for that out of bonds. Plumbing, electrical roofs, mechanical systems, all those types of things. Carpet, you know, carpet is one of those things that wears out. And so you can get a good, long life out of carpet, but it starts to wear out. I was walking through Unique Elementary this morning and that's one of that building's in beautiful condition. That opened in 2004 and it looks brand new with the exception of the carpet, which is, you know, 18 years old now and starting to look like 18 year old carpet. Lease levy, so lease levy districts are permitted to lease educational or instructional space as needed. And so we have a number of spaces that we currently lease. For example, we have the transition education center, which we leased for some time now. Eventually that lease will end as we're going to move them into the district center in 2025 approximately. We leased the pool at the Y C YMCA for swim lessons and our swim teams. We lease ice, we lease some spaces from 1916, they lease some spaces from us. That's the lease levy. And then local optional revenue. There was a point at which the legislature shifted money from operating levies to local optional revenue. Where that was a decision by the legislature that school districts could approve some local optional revenue for districts like us who had an operating levy in place. It took it right off of your operating levy and put it into local optional revenue. So it wasn't an increase for us. It was an odd year though, because it shifted money from voter approved to board authorized because there was a shift at the legislature. So we had some calls when the captain saying, why did my voter approved go down, but my non voter approved went up? Well, that was a legislative shift and wasn't something the board decided, it was something that the legislature decided. We also have achievement and integration is a board authorized levy. 70% of our achievement integration funds come from the state, about 30% from our local levy. Operating capital is based on per student funding amount. And again, that's for equipment facility needs. When you have large equipment needs, that's typically what we use those funds for. So school buses are purchased out of operating capital. If you need equipment for a specific program, maybe it's a kiln for the art program, you might use operating capital for that. Then there are other various smaller levies included career and technical levy, safe schools, ice arena, reemployment insurance. Those are all things that come out of our board authorized levies. Okay, Annie's going to talk about our capital project history.
So just some history of the voting results from the capital projects levy from the last two go rounds. So the first levy that was in November 4th of 2003 passed 54% to 45%. And then in 2013 passed 60% to 39%. As Tim had mentioned earlier, this is going to be used or can be used for technology related services, musical instruments, textbooks and other curricular needs. We do have the levy for one more calendar year. So up for consideration this evening is whether we go forward in November of this year or if we just wait until the following school year.
And that in 2013 for taxes payable 2014 to 2023 was a flat renewal. So we passed that initial one in 2003 and then we just did a flat renewal at the same rate.
We increased it in 2013.
Oh, did we?
But we're having a renewal this year.
This year will be a flat renewal.
Yep. So this just shows what our the tax impact is. And because it's a flat renewal, there is no change in what the proposed property taxes would be. So going forward then in July, we would be coming back to the school board and at that time asking for approval to place the renewal on the ballot in November. We have Shelley from Ellers here, who is a familiar face to all of you probably. She can answer any questions that you might have that are kind of more nitty gritty and just provide any additional information that you may need.
Do we have any questions?
The chart on the screen right now is shows taxes, tapes tapes of property and then what the expiring levy would be and what the new renewal would be. And so you can see it's a flat impact. So if you look at a $300,000 home, it's costing that homeowner $65 right now. With the proposal, it would be the same $65.
Mark. Doctor, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious. If my neighbor says, I'm looking at this, didn't we just do a huge bond for everything? How do you say simply, well, this isn't included?
Yeah, that's a great question. And this came up when we were having community meetings about the bond reform in 2019. You recall, we did over 100 meetings in the community and for that 2019 vote. And one of the things we explained was that in the in November of '22, we would be looking at renewing the capital projects levy. That's on the schedule. And so we it came up and we made sure that we we brought that up every time. So people understood that when we come back in 2020 or for the 2023 tax year, that will not be that will not be that will not be related to the bond referendum, that that's just renewing our capital projects levy, which is for technology, equipment, curriculum materials.
And that wouldn't have been included in the bond for building that we've been doing. When you're mentioning things like carpet wearing out and thinking, I wouldn't use that as an example because everybody would say you just got new carpet everywhere.
Yeah, and that example was for LTFM. That's a that's a different, that's not this. Yeah, that's for LTFM is a board authorized pay as you go or bond. And in that, that's where we replace like for like. So we can replace a carpeted area with carpet with new carpet. If we have a door that's broken, we can replace a take an old door, replace it with a new door. We can replace bad sheet rock, but we can't build a wall that didn't exist before. That's that's LTFM, not related to this at all.
I just know somebody's going to ask me that on record.
If you were on, if I could call, we have the four Ts. Couple of projects living with the four Ts. So I have these very technology test tubes, tumors and textbooks. That was the that was how the capital projects levy was discussed in the fall of 2013. So.
Yeah, I think that's saved.
Being built up. So in 2019, we got authorization issued bonds or not issued bonds here. Bonds are for buildings. This is, yeah. Those are the four examples that we used. Are we talking points during that?
I just think people are are more sharp about asking questions these days, so it's good to have that strength.
It's a point well taken because we'll just need to make sure we explain that effectively.
And it's a straight renewal, which is what we told the when we were talking about the bond mechanism. So it's just true to that word.
Their tax may not be straight because everybody's houses value more.
One thing I don't think we mentioned, but I think it's good to point out is this generates about two and a half, two and a half million dollars of revenue for us. So, you know, it's a really important funding stream for the school district. And without it, we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the really great things that we do for kids. And so, you know, I think just stressing that it's just a renewal so that we can maintain the operations that we're used to and that we really need is important.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ball. We're going to move on to discussion item two, teaching and learning updates. Dr. Gillespie.
Chair Arcan and members of the board, thank you for having us. I have members of my team from our department of curriculum instruction here, Jen Babish, the director of curriculum instruction, and then Dr. Melinda Vero, our research evaluation and assessment coordinator. So tonight we wanted to talk to you about a little bit more dive into, again, revisit our MCA data from last year and in comparison to our upcoming or our neighboring school districts and then really talk in more depth around our learning recovery specifically at the elementary level. We have a lot of exciting work going on and so we're hopeful to have a robust discussion around what's going on with elementary. Great, so the data that I'm going to talk a little bit about around MCA and then Melinda will dive a little bit deeper into the data that we collect locally, we're going to compare ourselves to our our peer districts and the districts that are surrounding us. And so for, obviously, that would be our closest local districts, Centennial Forest Lake and Madamidi. And then that also includes some in our our conference in terms of Mountains View, North St. Paul, Roseville, Stillwater and White Bear Lake, obviously. So if you look at the next graph, we are in orange. And this is how we compare in the 2021, we took the MCAs, which is last spring for the reading in our elementary. So the first big chunk is for third grade, then fourth grade and then fifth grade. Third grade is the first year that students take the MCAs. And if we remember, the MCAs are really a criterion referenced test that assess how students are achieving in their in reference to the Minnesota state standards. And it's an important test, obviously, for how our students are doing, but it is a one time snapshot of how students are doing on that given day when they test. And so while we take it seriously and we obviously want to continue improving these scores, we also look at the data that's internally and how we're looking at literacy and how students are progressing towards that and how teachers are collecting data inside classrooms so that we make sure that we really have a true understanding of how students are doing. And so I think it's important that we show where where we compare into compared to our local districts as well. Because sometimes we have people who have misinformation on us being the worst and we definitely are not the worst district. And we know last year was a really difficult time for everyone. And so these scores are lower than what we've seen over the past years when we have taken our MCAs outside of times that weren't significantly impacted by pandemic. The next graph that you'll see is our MCA math data for elementary and that's third, fourth and fifth grade. Again, these scores unfortunately are a little bit lower for us. They definitely are lower than what we've seen in past years. And again, show how we compare to our neighboring districts. The next chart I think is the most interesting. I am someone who's not as gifted as Melinda in looking at data, so that's I'm choosing to share it with you, is really looking at how our the media, how we've compared to the median score. And so if you look at the top row is math and it has third, third grade from 2019 and 2020, 2021, and then the respective grades below that, reading, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, same years. You can see the red hash is the actual median score of students who have achieved a three or four, which means they met or exceeded the levels needed on the MCA. And you'll see the orange dot again is where White Bear has fallen. And so really in most areas, we were at or above the median score with the exception of math really being an outlier for us last year. And so while, again, this is something that we are continually working on, we really are focusing a lot on how we're making sure that we have accurate internal data. And Melinda and Jen will talk more about our work and how we're focusing on learning recovery over the past two really difficult school years. We've taken a really aggressive approach in looking at literacy and we're excited about the future work in math. And so I'm going to pass it on to my two colleagues to talk a little bit more about that. Chair Arcan, I don't know if there's any questions about this data or if we want to circle back to it.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Nemester.
I always have a question. Is this the test that I recall people opting out of? So what percent opted out at the grades and how do you think that impacted looking at the cohort that took it versus the cohort that stayed home and took a day off school or two?
A really good question. So up until last spring to 2021, we had a round, it depends on the grade, but between 95 to 98% of the eligible students were taking the exam. Last spring, because of COVID, we had anywhere depending on the grade level, we're focused on elementary right now. So they still had decent participation somewhere between 75 to 84%, but that's still a fairly large drop in percent. It is very difficult to decide who, you know, what, how the students would have performed had they taken the exam. So that conversation about if everyone had taken the exam, what would the scores look like is a little more difficult from an analytics perspective. But we do know that that percentage of participation is highly likely to have affected, you know, the overall score of our district. And so that's why when you're looking at that last graph that Dr. Gillespie showed, you see how the hash stayed very similar, but the our the performance really jumped from 2019 to 2021. And some of that can be attributed to the less people taking it, so we had a less of them.
So as you gather data, did you kind of drill down and look at who didn't take it?
Yeah, we do have that that information.
Because then you could actually apply that and say, these people didn't take it, they didn't think they needed to, or these people didn't take it, they just didn't want to.
Yeah, we have, we we are able to to tell who is opting out, as you say, and who didn't take it because they couldn't last year because they were distance learners and you had to come in to do that. And there were a lot of families that weren't comfortable doing that. And then we had students who didn't take it because they were actually ill during the timeframe that that was that the test was happening. So there's sort of a mixture of reasons, especially last year, about why students weren't taking the exam.
I think if we could somehow make people know how important it is to know what the results are for them personally as well as the district. I don't know if you could make a lovely little meme for that, but it would be nice.
It's a delicate balance in terms of people's, how they, their own feeling around testing of their children. And, you know, there was a little bit of a swell last year on people wanting their children to opt out as well. So it is absolutely talking about really the skills that students have in classrooms and what we're seeing in the classrooms as well. But we do obviously see the MCA as important as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and the other thing I was going to say when I look at this data, the thing that we don't know, we don't know really where they started from. So we don't know how much growth they had. This is a snapshot, but we don't know if they were already there when they started, if they really could, they could be. Or they had tremendous growth to get there. And so when compared with other districts, we don't know what our growth was compared to them. And so that's important to remember that we just know this is where they're at, but we don't know how much learning occurred. Yeah, the question, okay.
And I'm wondering if we can get this data broken down by, like, you know, racial data, economic data. You know, we saw in the beginning slide the, you know, how many students in the district are on the free lunch program. I know that that would have an effect on these numbers as well to see which students are performing, where they should be and which ones are not. So we could see, you know, if there is a connection to that.
For sure.
I feel like there is.
Yeah, we take a deeper dive in this in the fall, but we absolutely can share that as often as we'd like for us. So absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we continue.
All right. We have a suite of assessments called Fastbridge. It is a a suite of assessments that was developed through the University of Minnesota. It was originally its own company, Fastbridge, and had a partnership with the University of Minnesota. It is now owned by a company called Luminate Education out of California. But the the quality of the assessments and the power behind them has hasn't changed. It is our universal screener platform K eight. So we screen all of our students in literacy and math K eight using this suite of assessments. And they were developed developmentally appropriate. So for example, when I talk about, I'm going to talk about three different assessments. The reason we have three different assessments is because developmentally speaking, one assessment is more appropriate for kindergartners and another assessment might be more appropriate for second graders and up. So that's why you'll see kind of that that difference there. It is part of our, like I said, universal screening program. And we use this information for a variety of reasons. We actually do a lot of data analysis around this data. Every building does, every collaborative inquiry team looks at this data. Teachers use this data for to help inform their instruction. The data is used to help identify students for intervention services if they need it. And then there are some aspects of our reporting, like our ReadWell by third grade information, our AdSys grant reports, things like that. We use this data for all of those purposes. But they're designed to be quick, kind of dipstick, spot checks, as it were, on student skills and where they are developmentally speaking. Speaking specifically about literacy, it's designed to follow that pattern of reading development. So the reading skills and it tells both what they've mastered. So some of the skills that they are good at around those subject areas and then skills that they might need some more support on. They were formulated using based on science of reading, which I'm sure you've been hearing a lot about. You'll hear more about after I'm done talking about Fastbridge. So they are connected to the latest and best research out there on literacy development, reading skills, and they are scaled to the developmental level. So I'm going to talk really briefly about the three main literacy assessments that we use under this platform. Early reading, which is actually in itself a composite of smaller assessments. And those are designed most appropriately for kindergartners and first graders and sometimes preschoolers can use them. One called A Reading, which is designed for students grades two and up. And CBMR English, which stands for curriculum based measure, reading, English. So in case, it's the kind of the lingo everybody says CBMR, which is also designed for grades two and up. So early reading at K one is actually comprised of four one minute assessments. And so when we talk about these, we want you to not think about a student sitting down, answering questions on a piece of paper. That's not how these assessments work. The four one minute probes are given in a one on one environment with a teacher. And it really for kindergartners, it's like all the other activities they do, right? So one might be, let's, let's practice our letters today and then they read their letters. So it's not, it's not one of those tests where kindergartners are sitting down writing things. There is a composite score that is the kind of a roll up of all of the different pieces of the assessment. And the assessments change depending on the season meant to match the development of the student, right? So in the fall, they might be focusing more on letter sounds. And in the spring, they might be focusing more on those decodable words that that they're learning in the classroom. A Reading is an adaptive assessment. It is an online assessment that's given in groups. So classrooms of students take this assessment at the same time. It takes about 20 minutes for a for a student to go through the assessment. So it's still really a kind of on the shorter end of an assessment. It does adapt to how they answer the questions. So if the student is answering the questions, they get more positively, they get more challenging questions. And if they are struggling with the questions, they get questions that are easier for them. And then CBMR English is an assessment. It's three reading passages that are different by grade level that students are given in a one to one environment again. So they are basically sitting down with a monitor and they read to that monitor for one minute. And then the monitor records the accuracy, so how well they are reading the words. And then the program also determines how many words they can read in one minute. So there are three one minute probes. And then that is a score that's again rolled up and it gives you pieces of information about the fluency of how they're reading. So you're going to hear that a lot. And then the accuracy of how they're reading. And both of those pieces are important for the development of reading skills. And I just pulled, these are a little harder to see because they're images. But I pulled a graph so you can kind of see what teachers and groups of staff see when they go into our data analytics software called Edge of Climber. It gives them these graphs. So obviously, the red means that's the percentage of students that are below benchmark at that timeframe. And the green is who is above benchmark at that time. And that blue bar is sort of that average score. So of all the students, what's the average? So you can kind of see that we can kind of see that we have, we had more green in the fall, and we have a little bit more red in the winter. The other problem, or it's not really a problem, but the other thing to be aware of is that that mark changes, right? So in the fall, to get to green is a little bit easier. And by spring, it's a little more challenging. And we don't have our spring scores yet. We're in the process of screening for that period. So after that's completed, we will look again at that. And normally, we do see a dip in the winter, and then we see a recovery in the spring. And so it's not unusual to, to see that line go a little bit like that. If you were a teacher in the classroom and you were looking at this line, you could see this for your, your own students. And you could click on it, and you could see who those students are and what their actual score was, right? So they are able to dig deeper into that. They are able to group students by score then, or, you know, flag them as needing more assessment to see kind of what's going on, what are the skills that they need to work on. All right? So that's early reading. And then same concept for A Reading. Again, A Reading is for grades two and up. So I do believe I pulled only the elementaries for this, for this slide because we were focusing on elementary tonight. So, so there's an elementary. You can look at it at K8. You can look at it to eight. You can look at a particular grade level. So there's all kinds of combinations there. And so you can see that we, for A Reading, we have some strong, strong positive scores. It makes sense because these are students that are, that are already reading. And so with our focus on literacy, you're going to see gains in second grade that K and one, we still are working through some of those skills. And then especially remembering that this is this year's data, so 2021, 2022. And we know that last year was very challenging from an academic standpoint. So we are somewhat relieved to see such positive numbers in our A Reading scores, but not, also not surprised to see that we have some work to do with K1. And then finally, this CBMR. This, this data is, again, going to look very similar. You can see that even though it gets more challenging as the, like, the mark gets higher, we actually are seeing that students are rising to that challenge. We, we do still have work to do with fluency and accuracy, but you can see that we have, that, that average score has risen a little bit so far this year. Are there any questions about Fastbridge or those three literacy assessments? Yeah.
On the last graph, is that also two, two, five?
Yep.
Okay. So comparable to the?
Comparable, yep. I, I tried to pull just the, the elementary scores. CBMR is, is actually given, both of those actually are given to two, eight. And since we weren't talking about middle school tonight.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Dr. Newmes.
And I'm wondering, how about our percent that are English language learners? Where do, how do they participate in this? Do they have a separate scoring that shows how they're developing? I mean, they usually did in their ELL classes.
Yep. So they don't, as far as the screener goes, they do take the same screener as every other student. But they do have the access testing. It is the state test for ELs. And that test actually does give more information around those literacy skills. That's kind of what it's designed for. And so EL teachers use both of them to kind of inform the conversation. So if they're seeing in access that they are struggling with comprehension, then they know that the CBMR score might be a little bit lower because there's, that is a skill that that student hasn't mastered yet. So they use them in tandem, but as far as screening goes, they do take the same assessment.
I was thinking, if kids saw this, they might feel depressed.
Yep. So they very carefully, the teachers work with the families. They usually share it with the families before they share it with the students, and they usually do it at conferences. So, you know, so they, they know how to have that conversation. So students are, are rewarded for the strengths that they have because there's always some positives that they can give out of this.
And if everyone takes it, again, it affects your, your scores, just like your MCAs. So I was just wondering how that all works in. Thank you.
Between the A Reading and the CBMR reading, those are the same grade levels, two, two, five?
Correct.
And they're already, you know, readers. Why is there such a big difference in the numbers between, like, the A Reading levels are, you know, really up there and the CBRM is down in the red, below the benchmark? So why is there such a difference?
So the CBMR is getting at a very specific skill, and that's the skill of being both accurate and automatic when you're reading. A Reading is a little bit more generalized, and so it's giving you kind of a more general picture of are they on track developmentally speaking for reading. And so it is, it is typical that a CBMR score is going to be lower until they get to the point where their accuracy and their automaticity reach 95%.
So is the A, so then I wonder if the A Reading scores are the way they are due to the fact that if the child has trouble with the question, the question gets easier? And that's why we have these numbers?
Except that if it gets easier, then it's going to actually end up lowering their ultimate score because, especially if they go below the developmental level, right? So it's grade banded.
So it does do up?
Yep.
It does?
Yep. It is grade banded. And so we will see some students with A Reading that are still working on some of those early literacy skills that we find in the early reading K1. And if that's the case, that student might, might actually have a diagnostic assessment for those skills and then, and then get some intervention so that they can perform more on grade level in the future. It's kind of hard because it, it's hard to see the underlying, right? Like, there's strands underneath us that the program does some analysis for the teachers and suggests, and basically as a group for this, for the whole classroom, what skills there as a whole that class needs to continue to work on.
Okay. Any other questions? Please continue.
So I, I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have two very specific goals around reading that are connected to our World's Best Workforce. Our goal for this upcoming year is that 70%, 75% of our kindergarten students who are enrolled in one of our preschool programs demonstrate school readiness by earning a composite score of 25 on that early re, reading that Melinda talked about. And so we'll be excited to share that data. That's a, a new goal for us as we've been partnering with our early childhood programming. And then again, our grade three proficiency goal is 68%. And that's by June of 2023. And that was our goal prior to the pandemic. And so those are our specific goals that are linked to the World's Best Workforce, but also something that we've talked about in the fall when we come and talk about the World's Best Workforce. And we will, again, in August, September, October, continue to talk more in depth about what we've seen with the Fastbridge assessments and when we receive our MCA data.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Why did we select 68%? What was the rationale behind that, looking at, you know, five, a little over 5%?
It was the goal we had prior to the pandemic. And so I'm the one who held on to it.
That works. I just didn't know if there was a reason behind 5%, not 4%, not 6%. Usually a reason, so I was just curious. Sorry.
Yeah. I could give you something else, but I'm telling you the truth. I'm the one who held on.
Thank you.
What is, what is a composite score of 25? What does that mean?
So that means, so there, there are benchmark scores that Fastbridge is looking for. And that 25 means that they are, like, they're right on track as an entering kindergartner. And so that's why we chose that score.
And, and just to be clear, the really only, that, that goal is for the students that we know have been enrolled in our preschool program?
Yes, because those are the students we know what curriculum and we can design the curriculum.
Right.
Correct.
Dr. Newmes.
And I know that we have a fine White Bear Lake program, and 75% of the kids are succeeding in where they ought to be. But what percent of our actual kindergartners have had that background? So the teachers have everybody. And a lot of people didn't. There's just not room for everybody, even if they all wanted to come. So what percent of our kindergarten cohort had?
Early childhood programming?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to dive into it. And I know it's been interesting to collect, but we can look into it for you. I don't know off the top of my head.
Especially during the pandemic, fewer people did. So that might impact. Lots of data.
We do our best to collect that information as students are enrolling in kindergarten. But it will never be perfect because not everyone chooses to tell us what their students have done before. So we'll, we'll get close, but.
Well, we wouldn't know if they were enrolled in White Bear. We wouldn't know if they went somewhere else.
No, yeah. Yep. And we've really increased our partnership with Darcy Rodriguez and making sure the alignment between our early childhood programming is aligned to what we're doing in kindergarten. And our early reading and what we're doing with Fastbridge is relatively new. So this connection, we're excited about looking at that data and what it shows for students being ready for kindergarten. It's helpful.
Any other questions? Thank you. Please continue.
All right. So I get to talk about the efforts that we're making towards literacy. And you'll see there's three columns there. I'll start over on the, the left side. Really focusing on our instructional leadership. We provide an avenue of learning for our leadership team, including principals, instructional coaches, our early childhood supervisors, and teaching and learning. We know that leadership matters for student outcomes. Thus, we needed to ensure our leaders were well-equipped with the knowledge and able to lead our literacy vision. And so in our meetings, as a leadership team, we analyze data, develop our vision statement. And for literacy, our vision statement is each student is guaranteed learning experiences that guarantee their lifelong literacy. And then we also research best practices. And so along with the leadership team, we simultaneously this year brought together a group of approximately 50 educators and reviewed and evaluated our data, researched best practices, and we reviewed the new ELA standards. The purpose of the ELA curriculum review team is really to develop a vertically aligned, guaranteed, and viable curriculum to provide experiences for lifelong literacy for each child. And you can see on that committee, there were instructional coaches. We ensured that we had an EL represent, representation, and our student support services along with classroom teachers, early childhood, and even a middle school representative as well. And then finally, this year, we also embarked on the, the Letters Professional Learning Journey. And so we had our early childhood and kindergarten teachers and instructional coaches. They're about to complete their first year in June of the Letters Professional Development, and it is on the science of reading. And I'm going to go into a little bit more about what specifically Letters entails. So Letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So Letters is a professional development. It's relevant, applicable, and designed to be the cornerstone of a multi-year systematic literacy plan. It's approximately 90 hours of teacher learning each year. And it's a two-year endeavor, and it includes coursework and facilitated instruction. It enables teachers to feel confident about teaching reading regardless of the grade level they teach. Letters complements any established reading program that is already in place, and it is not a curriculum. So why Letters? As, as I mentioned earlier, teachers are really the single most important factor in student achievement. And so as we think about the collective teacher efficacy that we want to have, we really want that collective belief that all teachers have the ability to positively affect students. And so how do we ensure that they have the, the training and the knowledge of the science in reading to be able to apply that to their students? We have made a very intentional effort to start with our teachers and provide them with the knowledge, time, collaboration that they need to learn the science of learning and the science of reading. And so they're able to respond to student needs and apply it directly into their classroom. I've said many times before, while teachers are the most essential factor in student success, we know only 49% of teaching institutions effectively prepare teachers for literacy instruction. So we really owe it to our teachers to, to provide them the resources, the time, and the collaboration to be able to learn the science of reading. Letters Professional Development provides teachers with the knowledge of the science of reading and space to apply what they learn while responding to students' needs. I talked about that collective efficacy. And teachers are able to, to work together in this professional learning. They have online modules, and then they come together as teacher teams to work together. And that's been a model that we've been able to, to do this year. As I mentioned, over 60 hours of learning and then that 30 hours of guided instruction that they have from an instructor. So Letters has more than a decade of demonstrated success in schools and districts across the U.S., and it fills the gaps in language structure and language development that were not taught in teacher preparation coursework. The percentage of students who are proficient readers is significantly impacted by their teacher having access to the science of reading professional development. I know we looked at some data tonight, but our hope is to report back more frequently with the board on our progress as our teachers continue their learning over the next few years in this endeavor. So maybe I'll pause there if there's any questions specific about Letters.
How's the, the 90 hours that they have, how's that fit into our professional development calendar, our calendar of the year? And how, how is that all, can we do things outside?
Yep, yep. So we've been very fortunate, and Dr. Gillespie can maybe speak a little bit to this as well, but we've really worked with our principals and worked with the teachers to say, how, how are we going to get this done? And honor the teachers' work during the school day. And if they are doing learning after school, how, how can we help with that compensation as well? So we've looked at our professional development calendar and been able to have our trainer come. And, and it's been virtual, so that's, that's been good. But having those professional learning days, to be able to have that guided instruction with the trainer, and then being able, you know, we've worked with principals to be able to relieve teacher teams for maybe an hour to work on this, or during their prep time and being able to compensate them for that, to be able to work as a team on this so they don't, not feeling isolated or alone, that they're kind of in this together and, you know, supporting each other through that. I don't know, Dr. Gillespie, if there's anything else you want to add about the, how we've been able to make this work?
Yeah, we really couldn't do it without the learning loss dollars that we received from the FSR dollars. So that is a major part of our program and how we've spent our money on the training and how we've provided support to our educators if they have to give up time to do some of that 30 hours. And really, our principals have been great about any of their collaboration time. How do we dedicate that towards Letters? How do we make sure we're using every ounce of our professional development time and really focusing on, we know the impact that this will have. And so as hard as it sometimes can be, but that clear focus for this kind of concentrated effort of time will have the impact on kids. We just are really excited about that. And so it's really been a team effort, but it is, it's a significant expense. And we could not do what we're doing right now without utilizing that, that, those funds. And so I've worked really closely with MDE to make sure that our plan would get approved. And I'm, I'm proud of the work that we've done because really it's focusing on that tier one, that first time instruction for students, which the research is really clear on. When you get When you get that right, that is the best way to really recover the learning loss that our students have had. And, you know, we obviously are looking at interventions as well as a whole system. But our early childhood educators are already done with their Letters training. And it's a year long for them. And it is a difficult program, and our educators are really excited about it. They say it's really great PD, but to lean into that while you're also teaching and doing everything is, it's been a team effort. And so we've tried to be really creative. There are other districts that we've also reached out to who are doing this so that we can kind of learn from each other on how, how we're creatively scheduling? How are we looking at different types of compensation for time, so?
Just the same curriculum then that our own senator from this area has written about in the winter press. And it's also being chaired the education committee has been pushing forward for the state to approve. And so we don't know whether yet that will happen because. But this is the, so we're ahead. If it passes, I mean, we've already done our childhood piece. And if that does pass, then we'll just continue. And hopefully that will provide some additional funding for us to continue to train as we move forward if that passes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll have to look creatively, but absolutely. And we, next year, we'll have 182 teachers that will go through this. So I have been really pushing our system to say, how can we get all of our teachers in three years trained in this? And then what's our sustainability plan? Because Letters training dates are really hard to get because everyone wants them.
Right.
And so we have a train the trainer plan right now. So eventually we'll have our own trainers. And that's actually, Cynthia would correct me, how I see it is a third year. That might not actually be true. It could be two years additional, but we are creating that sustainability plan so that we'll have our own trainers for Letters.
Proud of the work we've done and, you know, like a jumpstart for our kids is so great.
It's, reading by third grade is huge for our kids. And I'm super proud of all the work because really for, it's a whole team effort. But for people, our principals and educators to be willing to lean into it this year speaks a whole lot to the commitment of what we know is right for our kids. And really, we partner with our dyslexia advocates. They've been really supportive of us and are proud of our work as well. And so we just, yeah, we're going to see that.
Allison might want to mention that camp, generally calendars discussions, just because of the question of time.
Yeah, so next year, we may, we are looking at bringing a proposal for a modification because of Letters dates being so difficult to get that we might need to add two more PD days for elementary to get those Letters training days in, knowing that that's a potential, you know, short-term solution with that train the trainer, trainer model. And so looking at how do we look at, you know, what work we also have to do at secondary to maximize that time. And so my goal is to bring something soon. But that, those Letters dates, we worked really hard to have them on our existing professional development dates. But because of those 30 hours in between, how do we also make sure that educators have enough time to do that outside work? And next year, it'll be kindergarten finishing their second year, all teachers first through third grade, intervention teachers, cross-categorical for special education. Did I skip a slide? I'm on the.
Nope. I think you got them all.
Cynthia would be proud of me.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, thank you for using the money this way. And for 90 hours is a lot of time. And we're prioritizing this and really decided to see, I just read good things about those training. It's a lot of training and teachers are desperate. I just watch them work so hard and not see the progress they're hoping to see to give them tools to actually see. Amazing, and they have a great way to use these funds these ways. I know a lot of times PD is the, PD funds to pay for them to do this is very.
So to kind of wrap this up, tell me if I heard this correctly. Letters training is a, it's not a curriculum, but it provides understandings and structures that teachers can put in their toolbox to assist their students on their journey to learn to read.
Yes, and I would add teacher knowledge to that about the science of reading.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Can I cover some of your slides?
Yep, I had the, I just had our vision. So I think just one last thing about our plan, that we are trying to build internal capacity as well. And so after our first year, we have an opportunity to then train our own teachers in this. And so that's what we're looking into, to have some internal facilitators so that we would have even more flexibility, obviously staying with fidelity of the professional learning. But then have a little bit more flexibility with dates and when it could work with teachers. And then building that, that capacity of leadership as well within our teacher leaders. So we're really excited about embarking on that as well.
So while it's not a curriculum, though, it does align with some of the training, I think, that we've done with some of our teachers in the past. Or Dylan Ham, things like that, where that scientific, that, that style of, it fits nicely in some of the work we've already done.
Absolutely.
But not everybody has had the opportunity to have ELAs or ELAM training or things similar to that curriculum. I'm saying that curriculum, there's all there is, there's many that have the components that fit with this, right?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I look at it as teacher preparation programs. You know, we know 49%, they don't go through explicitly how to teach reading, right? And what is the science behind how someone learns to read? And this is what this is doing. The Letters training is dedicated to doing this. So even if teachers did have this in their teacher preparation program, the professional learning enables teachers to learn about it or review what maybe they've already learned. But then they put it into practice, and then they come back and talk about what worked, what didn't, what are they seeing with student needs that are improving.
And some of those other trainings that you're talking about help them learn strategies that they can use. And now they're understanding why those strategies are so powerful and effective.
So in working with us, because this is wonderful, and our teachers are amazing always, not surprised that they go above and beyond. In our diversity of our community, we have children who go home to homes where the parents probably don't know how to read. Are we looking at community involvement? How can we help those parents to help their children when they're at home doing homework to be able to do this? Because the teachers can't, they can't call all of them. Children also learn in their homes at night when they're with the parents, reading or not reading. And I just feel like there is a way to connect that so that those families don't feel like they're all alone, you know, in the process. Is there any way we can also bring the community into this work and help some of those families? I don't know if that's, I know other districts I've heard have done similar things where they hold, you know, after school, come in and they help the parents try to at least understand homework their kids are learning or give them a little bit of tools or different pieces that they can implement in homes to help their child.
Yeah.
Learn and help them not feel like they're failing their children by not being able to.
Yeah, I would say, you know, in talking to all the principals, right? They have a family engagement goal, right? A school goal that they're really wanting to engage families. And literacy is like number one on their, on their radar of how, how are we going to engage families? And how can we do both community building, but then also education? So that we know when students go home, how can families help their kids with reading, for example? Yep, so I, that really, I feel like is embedded within just our school improvement goals and the goals the principals have in their buildings. And this, I think, with the Letters gives the teachers the confidence to have those conversations with families and parents as well as their learning.
Because it could be on all different questions. Many parents are, you know, dyslexic themselves and still have troubles figuring this out and don't want to feel, you know, that they're not able to help their child. So I know like in the past, I remember, you know, AmeriCorps or some of those reading programs were coming to try to help maybe being able to, you know, utilize programs like that to help those adults also be able to learn. Or even just to be on a level to be able to help their child with homework or reading at the same time is important.
That's an answer, did you have a question?
I was kind of building on what you were just talking about. And I'm thinking, this is exciting. It's prepping the teachers to really get the kids on the right track, to be able to read efficiently and well. But I would hate to think again that parents think, well, they've got this new way, and now I can't even help with reading. First, I was doing math the wrong way, and now I can't even read right. So if there's some way of saying, how can you support this at home without saying you have to study 30 hours? You know, what are some quick activities that parents can do? And you've probably thought about that already, but all I could think of was being, being told, I wasn't doing math the right way, so don't bother me, you know?
Yes, that's great feedback for us to bring back to the principals as they work on some of those other committees too. Because that is, none of us want families to feel like that for sure. And I remember feeling that same way helping my nieces with math, so.
Reading should be a pleasure.
Are you ready to look at science?
Yes. All right, so we have our vision for, for science education that I know you've, you've heard from me before. But our vision is each student is guaranteed engaging experiences to create explanations of phenomena in our ever-changing world. So this was developed from the K-5 Science Curriculum Review Committee. And it really kind of guides our work as we think about science education and the new standards for our kids. One thing, I won't go through this in detail, but one thing just to know that we have a lot of conversations around our vision. It takes, it takes hours and multiple meetings to really come up with our vision and what we believe and what we hope for for our children. And this is evidence here of really then paring down, what, what does each word actually mean when we go through and look at our vision? And so just very purposeful, very intentional as we think about wanting to set our highest aspirations for our students. One vocabulary word I will point out is the phenomena. And knowing that the new science standards are really based in phenomena. And so this is very exciting as we think about our instruction and how kids will learn science. So if we can go to the next slide. This again is an update. I know you've seen this timeline before, but just wanting to reiterate that we did select Amplify Science as our new curriculum that's aligned to the 2019 Minnesota State Standards. There, it's really, Minnesota always likes to add a couple extra standards that maybe doesn't necessarily align to the national standards. But we have a plan for that too that I'll talk about. So we've adopted Amplify Science, and we are preparing to implement, implement for next year in each grade level, K-5. And we really are just going to start with one unit next year, just thinking about cognitive load, the professional learning that our teachers are having with Letters. And so each grade level will do one unit. You can see those units on that second column. And then one of the things I wanted to add was because Minnesota likes to adapt the national standards, there are specific benchmark standards to American Indian tribes and communities, specifically Dakota and Ashenabe. And so we are working with our educational equity specialist, Basu Wee Wee, to really integrate those benchmarks into our units so that kids have a very experience where they're experiencing multiple perspectives and really hearing from our American Indian tribes and their perspectives. And so we're super excited about that partnership, and, you know, the kids are too. And then finally, we will continue implementation. And by 2024, 2025 school year, we'll be ready for the MCA fours and be fully implemented in all grade levels with the Minnesota State Science Standards.
And the thing we wanted to also connect with the science is that also is a really great connection for our literacy work as well. Elementary principals are excited that we'll continue to help with the writing and is another link as we think about Amplify Science and that decision by the curriculum committee to continue to build our students' literacy skills through content. So those units next year, we're pretty excited about the units.
And then the next slide just talks a little bit more about what I already mentioned, kind of that phenomena-based approach. And so thinking about students being able to collect evidence and, you know, look at different multiple sources to build on their ideas for a more complex understanding of that phenomena. And then being able to take that understanding and apply it to another topic or problem. So really excited about that new approach with science and the connection with literacy. So I'll pause there if there's any questions about science. And then I have one slide about math.
Okay, please continue.
All right. So finally, just wanting to give you an update about math. And as I mentioned earlier, we took this year to talk with teachers about what is working and maybe what is falling short for, for math instruction. And so with this information, we, we had focus groups. We then surveyed our teachers to affirm that the focus group, that qualitative data that we collected really did indicate that we need to continue student learning around number sense and numeracy. And so if you think about number sense and numeracy, it's really about how we connect numbers to real-life experiences. And, you know, we think about counting, solving, measuring, estimating, sorting, kind of all those things for numeracy. And then for number sense, we, we think about, you know, how can we help? You know, we talk about friendly numbers, you know, numbers that end in zero, like 10, 30, 100, or numbers that are familiar, you know? For example, 27 is almost 25. And so when we look at number sense and numeracy, one of the strategies that we've, we've looked at and some of our teachers have been doing, and if you were at the Systems Accountability Committee meeting, we did a DOT talks, and it's, it's a number talk. And really, it focuses in on academic language of math. But then kids are doing the talking and the explaining of how they got to the answer that they, they, they got to. And knowing that there might be more than one way to get to an answer. And so we believe this is a great strategy where kids are really talking about their own learning and kind of, and their thinking and using the academic language of math. So we're really excited about that. And we're going to be meeting with the teacher team to talk about next steps for professional learning. Low cognitive load for, for this. And the good news is many of our teachers have been trained in number talks, but wanting to really continue that. And teachers are really finding a lot of success with it, so.
I think the unique spot we're in with math is we know we have new math standards out there. They're a little bit out there. So how, what can we look at to refine the experience our students are having? Knowing that we want students to continue to achieve even higher in those math skills as we look at what students are experiencing throughout our system and making sure we don't overload our educators to then unintentionally have an experience that's worse for our students, which is not what we want. But there are things we can do to look at how we're aligned to the curriculum, how instructional time is there. And so we're really excited about doing some of those things. And that number talks professional development is pretty powerful.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, that was an awesome report, we appreciate it. We're going to move on now to the question, item three, we just put here one, two, three, preliminary budget, and that would be Mr. Wall. We're going to move on now to the question, item three, just here, one, two, three, preliminary budget, and that would be Mr. Wall. Let's see that math talk is important.
Well, we will stay with the numbers theme, I guess. So when, this past winter, we we did the budget revisions for the twenty one, twenty two school year. And at that time, we projected what our, we projected FY twenty three or twenty for the twenty two, twenty three school year. Over there, so this budget cycle, we we just display whenever we talk budgets, you're reminded of the of the process of developing a budget. So you look back at January, February, mid-year budget adjustments and projected budget for next fiscal year. And and we made assumptions at that time on that we needed to build our budget for twenty two, twenty three. Hiring process and staffing process occurs during the spring. We have to have a budget on which to base that. And so that was that process. And now here we are in May, getting ready for the June preliminary budget proposal. We call it preliminary because really through the fall is when we start to have a really clear sense of what our revenue is going to be. We're we're projecting it at this point, and so we work with a preliminary budget. And then again, next winter, after our audit is complete, we'll come back to you with a revised budget. So the one thing we know about this budget is that it will change. We've talked a lot this year about our enrollment and that our the COVID effect on enrollment in schools across the nation was very similar in the White Bear Lake schools. We saw our numbers very consistent with what school districts across the state of Minnesota and across the nation felt. And so it is based on those revisions of enrollment projections that we built our preliminary budget. One of the challenges in building our budget is that the state funding formula has not kept pace with the rate of inflation. And so as we look at the chart that I'm displaying at this point, you can see that there's quite a gap between where we would be if we had just kept pace with inflation since two thousand and three. Of course, there were several years where where we were funding was flat to schools. That set us back and then we just never make that up. So there are significant challenges schools are facing. And we were hoping for some support from the legislature this year, and that's certainly up in the air at this point. Andy's going to talk about our budget assumptions, Andy Johnson, our Director of Finance, talk about our budget assumptions and then walk us through the preliminary budget.
So just highlighting a couple of the key assumptions that we've made in the budget going into next year and then the projection for the following school year. One thing we know is that our state aid formula is going to increase by two percent for next year. We don't know the twenty three, twenty four school year, so we've built a projection of two percent. If that doesn't come to fruition, that will mean a much different projection for the twenty three, twenty four school year. But twenty two percent feels reasonable based on the status of the economy in the state of Minnesota right now. Enrollment is based on eight thousand three hundred and eighty two ADMs or average daily membership, as you saw in two slides ago, where our projections have been. We're showing steady growth going forward, just not quite to the to the extent that we were hoping pre-COVID. The budget adjustments that the school board has approved have now been rolled into the numbers that you that you have in the packet. And as Tim had mentioned, we've been told we're going to get some more funding. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like. So unfortunately, we aren't able to make any assumptions right now. Hopefully, that comes to fruition and we'll be able to change that then in the budget that comes to you in June. So hopefully, there will be a better budget that we present in June, but this is based on what we know today. So where do our funds come from? In the general fund, right now, on these graphs, I'm just going to be focusing on the general fund because that's where the bulk of our operations come through. So as you all know, state sources is the largest source of our funding for our school district. Sixty eight million dollars or about fifty four percent is just general education, state aid. Special education, you can see in green, is about fifteen percent. That's also state aid, but we spell that out separately, just because it's such a large part of our of our funding. Federal sources and federal COVID nineteen relief, I just separate those out just so you're aware of the of the COVID funding that we are receiving. About two point five million in federal sources and about two point six million in federal COVID relief. So that's, we're kind of tapering that back. We had significantly more federal COVID funding in the budget for this current school year. Property taxes is about twenty six million or twenty percent of our funds. And long-term facility maintenance, we talk a lot about LTFM. It's a big funding tool for us in schools. That's about six million or five percent. That's also a subset of property taxes. And then other, there's lots of miscellaneous things like athletic fees, interest revenue, although that's pretty miniscule nowadays. The, what are some other ones? Fees that students pay for home ec or for industrial arts, that all gets rolled into that other. In total, our budget for this year is about a hundred and twenty seven, or for next year, a hundred and twenty seven million dollars of revenue. And then how do we spend our funds? So I've got this broken out in two different ways. The first is by object code. So salaries and benefits, as we all know, is the very largest portion of our of our budget at a hundred and two, a hundred and two million or eighty percent of our expenditures. Purchase services is at about eleven percent. The largest item that goes into there is related to transportation. Our contracted transportation falls into that bucket. Supplies and materials, so that would be the supplies we purchase for our classrooms each every year is about four percent. And capital expenditures is also about four percent. So that's really kind of the the most discretionary use of our funding. So we're pretty frugal, if you think of that as a percentage of our total budget. We don't put a lot of our funding towards supplies and and capital expenditures. And then other is, there's always like those miscellaneous things like dues and memberships to professional organizations that we belong to. We have a capital, some of our capital leases that we've talked about, those lease levy that we talked about earlier, that funds through, that flows to the other line as well. And then we break out our funding by program area. So the the largest, and this is kind of hard to read, I apologize, hopefully it's better on your screen. The largest chunk of our spending goes towards towards the students. So regular instruction is just like a regular K twelve teacher is about forty four percent of our total spending. But if you start there and just kind of follow the graph around, that I'll go through all of the spending that really touches our students. Vocational ed would be like our career and tech funding. So we have business programs, home ec, I guess it's not called home ec, Family and Consumer Science, technology, industrial arts, a small portion of our funding goes there. Special ed is a large part of our funding, twenty five, twenty five million dollars or twenty percent of our expenses. So this is one item that the legislature is really focused on, and we're really hopeful that that's going to help or come through because that's a major expense for this school district. And we're happy to spend that, right? It's the right thing to do for our kids, but it doesn't come for free. Instructional support services, so this would be items like our media centers, our our counseling, professional development, all of that gets grouped into instructional support. And then there's pupil support. So that would be items like social workers, our health programs, our achievement achievement and integration programming, that all gets grouped into that that bucket. So those two account for about ten percent in total. Transportation is about six percent of our total budget at seven point two million. Sites and buildings at about eight point seven million. So this would also include the LTFM funding that we talked about in the revenue side that falls into this seven percent bucket. Oh, just kidding, I look for it, it doesn't. Sites and buildings would include like capital projects or operating capital, a lot of our expenses for that, and then just our custodial costs. And then we do break out LTFM separately on this on this budget, so for this graph, so five percent towards the LTFM expenses. And then, again, just the miscellaneous other. Administration would be like building administration and some district center administration. So mostly, that's going to be our our principals at the sites. And then district support services would be most of the staffing that you see at district center. So the finance department, the HR department, some of the teaching and learning, all of those kind of ancillary departments that are necessary to run the school, so about two percent there. Any questions on how we spend our funds or the sources of of funding? Okay, so just breaking out our fund balance summary. So total revenues for this school year, for next school year is is are projected about a hundred and twenty seven million. And then total expenses are just shy of a hundred and twenty eight million. So we still are showing a deficit of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next school year. That's after, again, those budget adjustments have been rolled in. The line that we really focus on when we think about our budget is the unassigned fund balance that you have in that you can see in blue. So we're projecting an unassigned fund balance of ten million, two hundred and sixty thousand for next year. And that puts us right at the eight percent of our total expenditures. So that's really where we want to be. I would say that's it's a it's maybe not quite where we want to be because we don't want to be unbalanced. We want our revenues and our expenses to be equal, but we are showing really good growth towards what our goal would be. Projected out for the twenty three, twenty four school year, we're still projecting about one point four million dollars of reductions. That would put us at seven point eight percent of our unassigned fund balance. So a little bit of a dip down, but again, we are pretty hopeful based on the legislator legislature that that's going to come out a little bit better for next school year. I'm breaking out then the other operational funds that we have, the three that we really look at, nutritional services fund, community services fund, and debt service. Nutritional services, they are showing a slight increase for this current school year and then a decrease for next year. A couple of things going into the budget for next year in the nutritional services fund. The free meals for all students is going away. And so we really don't have a great grasp on how that'll impact our revenues. We think participation will very likely be decreasing if the meals aren't free for all students. So that's why you're seeing that decrease in the revenues. And then the expenditures are going up because the cost of food is is increasing, you know, really drastically. And we had to do some market adjustments on our staffing for this year because we simply weren't able to find our nutrition services staff. So we had to increase wages. So you, so that's kind of what you're seeing in the in the imbalance there. I will say that those estimates, I think, are conservative on both sides. So we're hopeful that that's going to come out a little bit better. But we just, we don't want to be too terribly optimistic going into next school year. When we created this budget for nutritional services for this year, we had to put all those numbers together this winter, like in December. And we do feel very confident that we're going to come out significantly better than we budgeted. So even though we're showing, you know, a nearly eight hundred thousand dollar decrease in nutritional services next year, in total, that fund balance is going to be performing better than we anticipated. So they're going to be higher than eleven percent. In community services, they're showing a little bit of growth for next school year. Similar to nutritional services, when we built that budget for this year, we have to do that quite early in the school year when we we don't have a whole lot of history in the our months of history within the school year to develop. So I think we'll perform a little bit better this year and that'll just help going into next school year. So ending next school year at about sixteen point five percent fund balance. And then debt service, this is where our bond payments come through for all of our all of our miscellaneous debt, the largest of which is related to the building our future bond that was just approved in twenty eighteen. So our debt payments come in as revenue and then just based on our payment schedule is is where expenditures are are coming in. So showing a deficit there, but that's just planned and MBE really dictates this for us. So that fund balance just kind of is what it is based on the receipts that we get and the expenses that we have. So this is just the first look at the budget for next school year. It'll be brought forward again to the school board on June thirteenth for approval. But if there's any questions, we're happy to take them.
I just have one question. I'm just curious of the cost of our fuel, has it affected transportation? Or rise or actually stay where it is right now?
Yeah, we increased our our, that is one of the assumptions that we made. We did increase our budget for the fuel. I can't recall exactly, I think maybe seven to ten percent. Hopefully, that's enough, but that might be one of those items that we are under budget on.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Looking at our agenda, like, you're done, correct? I want my trash.
We're done.
So that completes our agenda for tonight. So at this time, I would I would see a motion to return. Yeah, if we were first, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. If she carries her return, thank you all.